Seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Ken, would you do the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Larson? Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Steeler?
Here.
Chair Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Mr. Stender?
Here.
Mr. Miller is not here.
Thank you. We ask if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as is or with corrections.
So move, sir.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, it's an undebatable motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The Chair will make a motion to pull the Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 13th from the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
You're pulling them from the consent agenda?
Yes, for discussion.
Okay.
Going up with two motions, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here for any of the previous stuff.
Okay, sounds good. So, the reason I asked for the minutes to be pulled is, under Item 8, Discussion, it would be Page 4. We were discussing the Urban Services, Item 8. I think it's, well, it's actually Page 5 of the report, but Page 4 on the minutes. In the third paragraph, the, Ken was explaining that concerns to public health with lots that are connected to city utilities. It should have said "not connected to city utilities." It's a pretty big difference.
And I'm amazed I did not catch that. Thank you very much, Chair.
We expected you to have caught it, so we're a little stunned, actually. Any other corrections to the minutes? Chair is looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes, the corrected meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept it as the corrected meeting minutes, Chairman?
I got another correction.
Okay.
I didn't share septic systems in the next, in the next paragraph. I stated, shared, she stated, shared septic systems. Were not appropriate. I only got one septic system and I don't share it.
Thank you for sharing.
So, to clarify, you're adding in the word "steeped."
Stated, correct. Thank you, sir. And I appreciate it.
Make that corrected, motion, Chairman.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
I got a motion and a second, any other discussion on this minute? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstained, abstain.
Motion carries. Item 6, Regular Agenda, a public hearing for Westlake Shopping Center expansion, 119 209 and 289, 12th Street Southwest, recommendation of a final plan unit development plan. Ken, I trust this is yours, since you're the only one sitting over there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. As you introduced, Mr. Chair, the public hearing this evening is for review and recommendation on a final plan unit development plan. This is for the Westlake Shopping Center, which is at, specifically at 119 12th Street Southwest. The site in question, I've got up on the screen here for this evening. And why this is before the Commission is the owners of the shopping center want to add this new building and parking area on the north end of the site, which is in now this green area here. City code requires adding a freestanding building on a commercial site requires approval of a PUD. The PUD code requires that all PUDs get a preliminary review and approval, and then gives the developer applicant time to make corrections, changes as necessary, and then it has to come back through the Planning Commission and City Council for a final review and approval. And that is where we are at this evening. Commission will recall, for those who are here, back in January, you reviewed these, again, these plans for the expansion of the shopping center, which include this building and the parking area. You recommended approval of the preliminary PUD plan to the City Council. You also approved the project design plans, subject to 26 conditions of approval. Council approved the preliminary PUD plan back on February 26th. Again, that approval was subject to six conditions of approval. Since then, the project engineer has worked through the revisions and corrections required by the city engineer. They have met all the requirements of our city engineer with this latest set of plans. One change I will pull up, that was discussed and agreed to by the applicant, if I get to the right sheet, is regarding landscaping. And the biggest, most important change, I think, is this area of trees here were added to landscape plans. 19 of coniferous trees planted between the drive aisle and the property line, or will be planted there, to help provide screening and buffering for the homes to the east in the residential neighborhood, and this is the backside of the shopping center. And that was one of the initial requirements, or recommended conditions and requirements of the, both the design plans and the PUD. Other thing I'll point out in this request, let's go here. Commission will recall that, no, let's go back here, my apologies. Mr. Carwash has been approved and is going to get built here. They have started prepping the site and were intending to start the utility work, which will involve extending utilities from 12th here, up here into the Mr. Carwash site. That work was intended to start this week, but because of the weather, they have pushed that back two weeks. But they do have their permits, they do have their approvals, and they are going forward with that project. And why that's important is, the utilities for this new center, and again, I'll find the correct sheet, are supplied by, this is where the new driveway will be for Mr. Carwash, the utilities for this site come in or connect to the new utilities that Mr. Carwash will be extending, or installing here. The timing is a little behind, but yet should work for this project, because the earliest this project will go to the City Council is April 8th. And the applicant's well aware that they need these utilities before they can actually build this project. And I don't see that as a big concern, but it's noted in the report, so I thought I'd clarify that a little bit. The report said initially they would be done by April 12th, but again, has been pushed back primarily because of the weather. In reviewing a PUD, and this is on pages 10 and 11 in your packets, we have nine findings of fact that we look for with a condition, or, excuse me, a planning and development. And these are all the same that you saw with the preliminary PUD. Again, the site hasn't changed, or the design hasn't changed significantly, other than the landscaping I touched on. And in summary, this proposal meets the requirements and standards the city has for planning unit development. So with that, we have a recommendation, which is on page 12 of your packet. Staff is recommending, Plan Commission recommend, approval of the final PUD plan for this Westlake Shopping Center, which is at 119 209 and 289 12th Street Southwest. This would allow the owners to add this 9,600 square foot retail building and the associated parking on their site. We're recommending this approval, subject to seven conditions, which are in the staff report. Oh, one thing I, oh, I gotta jump back on, I apologize. There was a discussion in need about util, or, excuse me, pedestrian easements along 12th Street, and this is mislabeled, 3rd Avenue. The applicant has agreed to those and has already submitted the easement documents for city review and approval. And that will be finalized with the City Council when it goes to them. The other condition, Condition 5, staff is proposing that the applicant owner install all the landscaping that's shown on the landscape plan before the city issues a certificate of occupancy for the new building, in part because we want to make sure the impervious surface improvements are made and the screening, buffering are accomplished on the west side of, or, excuse me, west side of the neighborhood, east side of the building. And that's Condition 5. So in summary, plans very similar, they've made some tweaks and improvements as requested by the city engineer and staff, and we are recommending, the Commission recommend approval of the final PUD plan. And that will go to the City Council, they are the ones that will make the final decision on that. The applicant is here, you have questions for him, Mr. Holder, otherwise I'll take questions from the Commission.
Questions to staff?
I have a question. On that landscaping, I think it's number five in the, in a recommendation, but
Yes.
And it's on page 9 of 43, the second paragraph, which I think is exactly as worded in Number 5 of the city, you started reading it, the city should require the applicant owner to install all the landscaping for the entire shopping area before granting certificate of occupancy for the new building. And I understand that completely, because in construction projects, when things go over budget, landscaping gets cut first, and you want to ensure that that gets in there. But then, the second sentence seems like a different issue. This is to ensure the shopping center will meet the impervious surface standard the city approves. It seems like a different issue, the impervious service. So it seems like they could build the whole project, they meet the impervious service standard, you know, maybe they don't want to put in the new, the trees, they, you know, ran over budget, they said, and the city says, "No, you gotta put in the trees, or we're not going to give you the certificate of occupancy." And they say, "Well, no, that was to ensure that we met the impervious service, and we're meeting the impervious service." You know what I mean? It just seems like there's two issues, you're kind of cramming to one, and that are kind of unrelated, that, I just thought that was odd when I read it, to me.
Mr. Chair? Can I answer it, or I can?
I'll give it my shot. Part of the PUD request, if you recall, is, this area is all now green space, and the entire shopping center is right at 80% impervious. They are now removing, or adding to, they're removing impervious surface by adding this to replace some of that, these dark areas are areas where new landscaping is going to go in, and along the entrance drive, and the new tree planting. What I was concerned about is, we don't want all this to get built and then not have these landscaping improvements go in, because part of the approval of the PUD is they are agreeing to take out some hard surface areas, add in landscaping to get some of the impervious surface area reduced as part of the PUD approval. So, the thought from staff was to ensure that this landscaping all gets done, that's part of the agreement, that all gets placed before the certificate occupancy gets in.
And is it possible, would it make sense to just drop that second sentence out of I mean...
Do you want the second sentence dropped up on page 9?
Well, it's on page 9 of 43, but I think if I scroll down to where we recommend, I think it's Number 5, or, maybe it's not Number 5.
It's Number 5 on page 13.
Page 13, okay. In the part where we...
I get that it just explains why it's there, if the Commission's not comfortable.
But it seems, it just seems to me that they don't, but if you're okay with it and the city's okay with it, I just brought it up because it seems like you're mixing two separate issues, and that they could possibly not put in the 19, or, you know, or not install all the landscaping, and if they meet the impervious surface, I know the impervious surface is now 83.5% or whatever it was, but it would seem like they could get out of installing all the landscaping, as long as they meet the impervious surface. But as long as you guys are, then I'm okay with it. I just, I read it and I thought that second sentence was unnecessary, but I'm willing to give in on that, you know?
No problem. Would you like it corrected, or stated differently, or we could have a new 5, 6, and 7?
Unless Ms. Young has an idea of...
I think that absent landscaping, trees, shrubs, et cetera, eventually you lose the impervious surface. It either gets asphalted over when they redo a parking lot, it gets hardscaped, it gets class 5. And I think that the landscaping, the trees and the landscaping in the front facing 12th does ensure that the impervious area will not be degraded and will be maintained. And the landscaping is how we maintain a block of pervious area while minimizing the impervious area as much as possible. So I'm comfortable with the explanation there, but if you've got a better wording...
I didn't have a better wording, I just, I didn't know that an explanation was needed. I, you know, they've, we've stated what the impervious area is, we've stated specifically what the landscaping is that should, that needs to be there, and it's shown on the plans, too. I just thought...
That's true.
It was on the, but, again, I'm not gonna...
You're easy tonight.
You know, tonight, I can be pushed around on this one, so. I'll let it go. If no one else is concerned about it at all, I've just, yeah, you know, landscaping is just one of those things on construction projects, that you want to make sure it gets in there, and not any excuse to not get it in there, so. Everyone's okay?
Susan?
Ken, I appreciate that you and the applicant took care of some screening with the residences, and also I do appreciate the right of way, very much. I think that's, we actually got to do some planning here for the city, so I do appreciate that.
Other comments for staff or the applicant? I have one, Ken, and this has nothing to do with the project. I think it's going to be a great project, well, it does have something to do with the project. But on page 42 of the report, the trash enclosure elevations are mislabeled. It, it's, I know that that front entrance to the trash enclosure is going to face south, right there, that's the one.
Right here.
So, yeah, these are just mislabeled which direction they're facing, because we know that that whole thing faces south, where the opening is.
Yep.
So, just...
Yeah, I think these two are flip-flopped.
Yeah, until, you know, they can, you know, I think just, well, no, they need to be labeled north and south, so. I think they would be fine just not paying the architect, and that'd be good.
I'll let Brian take that up with them.
Would the applicant like to add any comments this evening?
And, Mr. Chair, remember, it is a public hearing.
Oh, yeah. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Brian Holder, 8816 6 Forks Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'd just like to say thank you for the support. You know, I enjoy these daily trips up to Minnesota anyway, so it is fun, but I appreciate your commitment to it and your support for the project. And I'll address your concern about the landscaping. I mean, every time I've ever built anything, if I don't install it per the approved landscaping plans, then you don't give me what I need, which is a CBO anyway, right? So, and I get it, I mean, landscaping goes in last, it's just as a sequence, and it's the first, you're right, it would make sense if things go over budget, but at the end of the day, I mean, obviously it's our intent, we will, we will perform per all the plans, obviously, but that's, you are protected there. I mean, if I don't put the trees in that say, that are in the plans, then you say, "I can't, you know, I can't give you your, your CBO," anyway. So, you should be, feel, feel good you're protected regardless, but, but anyway, so. But looking forward to it. Look, I mean, we're working hard on finding tenants and getting it put together, so.
Questions for the applicant? Well, we thank you for coming back.
Absolutely, thank you.
You had much better weather the last time.
At least it wasn't snowing all.
This is a public hearing, the way this will work, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak to this application, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once we've heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing, and we will bring it back for a decision by the Planning Commission. So with that, I'll open the public hearing at 7:21 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anybody online or anything to be read into the record? No, yeah, excuse me, no one online, I received no comments, calls, emails, or anything about this, so, nothing.
Which is an improvement.
Very.
Which is, which is a good thing.
Yeah, we've done the heavy lifting.
Yes.
The parking lot's not full, as we say.
True.
I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? See, when no one comes forward, and no one online, or anything to be read into the record, we will close the public hearing at 7:22 PM. Commissioners, what would you like to do?
And just to be clear, you have one recommended motion.
Yes, it's a recommendation, we are not the final approval, that is City Council.
Okay, let me find the wording.
I think we're on page...
Page 12.
Thank you. I went to page 42, you know, so...
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend to the City Council approval of the final PUD planned unit development for the Westlake Shopping Center, which allows the owners to add a 9,600 square foot retail building, parking, with the seven conditions that are attached.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, it'll go to the City Council on...
April 8th.
April 8th, and they are the final approval of this. But welcome back to the city, we look forward to your expansion. That is our primary business item tonight, so we'll start with the staff updates. We have the honor of having Councilperson Roberts with us tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I don't have anything other than to just, it's non-city related, but to thank Chair and Lion Gerard for playing the Easter Bunny at our breakfast, the Lion Breakfast, on Saturday, which was well-attended, so thank you for that, but other than that, I don't have anything unless you have anything for me.
Questions for our councilman?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Blake, do you want to talk to me about the recruitment process for the city administrator? The update on that?
Yeah, sure, yeah. So, as of today, so, I think, back up a little bit, we, we went from expediting Christina Hance's process to putting a hold on that, then we decided to go back to Plan A, which was to put out applications for, or request for, applications for new city administrator. That officially happened today. I think we, the window is a month to receive those, and there'll be interview process, there'll be public input, members of the Commission will be involved in that. And then, the plan, if things work out timing-wise, is to have that person seated by July 1st. So, we're hoping for a good selection of individuals, and looking forward to that process.
Any questions?
And thanks for your, your time again, once again, on a Wednesday night, nice short evening, so that's good.
Thanks, you. Ken, what do you have for us?
A couple of things, Mr. Chair, thank you. We touched on it briefly, Mr. Carwash was supposed to get going with their utility work this week, has been pushed back a couple of weeks. Will start on the 8th, it'll take about three weeks, coming in off of 12th, around, right by this site that we review this evening. Yeah, they've picked up their building permit, so that project is, we can say, is a goal. And they'll hopefully be done by October, I don't know, they, they haven't said how long it will take, but it's, it is really happening, I can report that, so that's great news. We will have a meeting on the 10th of April, that's our next meeting, have a public hearing scheduled for the review of the re, first step in the reorganization of the zoning code, the architecture. Where we looked at that with the layout of all the sections and subsections, and had the consultants in about how to reorganize it into a better, more readable zoning code, and that is on for the next meeting for sure. Doubtful that we'll have a second meeting in April at this point, I'm not aware of any applications that are pending that would be on that meeting. That's my two updates, unless there's other questions.
Tim and Jesse, I don't believe you were in the earlier discussion for the zoning.
No, they were not.
I was in the audience.
Oh, you were in the audience, yeah, but, Tim, you have not, you might want to watch that video, it kind of, I think they did a good job of explaining what's going on, so that would have been the meeting of the wonderful...
Maybe, was it the first meeting in February, the 14th?
Yeah, it was Valentine's Day, I think.
Let's, let's discuss code, zoning code on Valentine's...
Feel the love.
Yeah, and, and, Tim, to try to put a very concise explanation, the zoning code the way it is now is a hodgepodge, a conglomeration, it's not the best organized zoning code. So Abby brought in some consultants to go through it, try to figure out how to make it more streamlined, more user-friendly, and the first step in that is to reorganize it and put the most important things at the beginning, some of the less used things towards the end, do, none, at this point, none of the words are going to change, it's just the organization, the layout from 1 to 12, or whatever it's going to be. After that's approved, and hopefully it will be by the Council in May, if not the end of April, then we'll start going through the zoning code, and what we would call, pick off the low-hanging fruit, the things that staff knows are just, it's inconsistent, or it's wrong, or it's not current, just do some, what I would call, housekeeping routine kind of changes, get those taken care of before we dive into more substantive changes, but, so step one is just get it better organized, and that's what we'll be seeing at the next meeting.
The way I explained it to somebody who asked me was, two generations ago of humans, when the township and the city had their coming together, the two, they both had planning commissions, they both had zoning codes, and it was just smashed together. And like, when maybe you've had two or three different big projects at the house, you threw all the paperwork into one box, and now you want to go back and try and find something in the box, it's all a mishmash. So, we're finally getting to that housekeeping that gets put off because it's no fun for anybody. Nobody wants to sort through that paperwork.
Ken, Abby sent us that out, that thing, maybe we could add these, the two new gentlemen onto that, so they are up to speed with...
Yeah.
Get a chance to view that before we have our meeting, and maybe they can...
And what they're referring to is the consultants that worked on it gave a nice presentation on where it is, where we're going, and why, and, what was it, it was, oh, the Monopoly game comparison.
Yeah.
And one thing we're going to be striving for with the rewrite or update is to have more graphics in the, instead of just all text, text, text. And so, she pulled up an image of the Monopoly game instructions from 1930s or 40s, and it was just all text. And now, the more modern ones, you've got images, you've got houses... And now, the more modern ones, you got images, you got houses, you got hotels, it's more visually appealing. There, we expect more of that will be entered into the code as we go through the updates.
Any other questions for Ken? I mean, none? Oh, Susan?
Two questions on two development projects. Where is the developer at on the northeast section of Shadow Creek? And then there was a development that had to have things fast-track, fast-track, fast-track farther east on 202nd, and I don't see anything in that area.
Well, the first part, the northeast corner of Shadow Creek, Abby and I met with that developer owner last week. He thought he might have a buyer for it, and he said, don't do anything, I'll get back to you, and we're still waiting.
A buyer for the whole property?
Well, he said he was exploring trying to sell the whole thing to one development company. So it continues to be a moving target on all of Shadow Creek. And we thought we'd hear something in two or three days, it's been a week. So we wait.
Okay.
And that, for the new, that's at 61 and 202nd, the northeast corner of the horse farm, which everybody knows is the old horse farm.
Yeah. So there's development plans proposed for around the horse stables operation for now?
And it's been, we've been at it for, we must be on year three of trying to put a plan together.
Longer than that, if you go back to the mental health facility.
Be nice.
And Ms. Young, where was the other site? I'm trying to picture.
It's, as you go east on 202nd, it's where the sidewalk ends, where the utilities end. There was that subdivision that we looked at, and he needed it right now, right now, right now, and then. I haven't seen squat.
Yeah, that, so east of Goodview, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was before my time. We actually have had realtors calling us, looking at that site, that they're, they've got buyers interested, and they're doing their due diligence. They're getting old staff reports and minutes and checking on utilities.
Yeah, I think that developer folded up his tent and left, if memory serves me.
But it was, yeah.
One last addition, the, Susan, you probably have seen it, the utility work is now going in for the new environmental center, extending from County Road 50 to the south along the east side of Highway 61. So we'll all have sewer and water there.
Ah, and one more thing. Is the city planning on opening the Yardway site as a Yardway site, or are you still asking us to go down to Hugo?
Hugo is my understanding.
Okay.
That opens in April, doesn't it?
Pardon?
Doesn't that open up in the April area?
Typically, weather-dependent, but yeah.
They've got April 1st on their website, you know, the more, more than just Saturday hours. Not every day, but more than Saturday. Yeah.
Yeah.
Down by Woodlock Stables.
Okay. I'm not a horse guy. Anything else, Ms. Young? Do you have anything?
No, good tonight, sir.
All right, true.
Nope.
Dan, Jesse?
We're good, sir.
Chair has nothing more, so with that, Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, it's a non-abatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for your time and your participation this evening.